Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting for Monday, December 13th, 2021. It's approximately 6:08. I'm gonna start, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you for your patience. We've had some technical difficulty. Before we begin our meeting, there will be one general period of public comment tonight during oral communications. Persons speaking during the general pub, public comment period may provide the Planning Board oral communications on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment period, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. Tonight, we'll have our invocation given by Board Member Atikunian, and I'll lead us in our flag salute. Go ahead, Mr. Atikunian.
Yes. Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you guide our thoughts and give us the wisdom to engage in sound deliberation. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and exhibit kindness for all. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and this great city. And please help us accomplish our goals. In your name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand and join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the
Judge Leges.
Thank you. Can we get the roll call?
Board Member Monaco?
Here.
Board Member Heiner?
Present.
Board Member Atikunian?
Present.
Vice Chair Rizotti?
I'm here.
And let the record show Chair Gamboa is absent.
In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and the interest of Public Health and Safety Board members will be participating in an online Planning Board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend tonight's meeting. The city is providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating in Planning Board meetings. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. Do we have any announcements tonight?
No announcements.
There are two hearings on tonight's agenda. Item number one, now is the time and place for the hearing on project number 190001137 to receive public comment for the draft environmental impact report for the proposed mixed-use project consisting of 49 condos condominiums units, 2,000 square feet of ground-level restaurant retail use located at 3700 Riverside Drive. This public hearing is being held during a 45-day review period that started on November 29th, 2021, and will end on January 12th, 2022. No decisions will be made by the Planning Board at this meeting. Only public comments will be received. Before we begin, do any Planning Board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
No?
No.
Have any Planning Board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other persons?
No.
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 No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
Yes, there have been some written communications. They were sent to the city and forwarded to the board. There was three comments on this particular item.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Planning Board Vice Chair Rizotti, members of the Planning Board. This is Daniel Villa with the City of Burbank Community Development Department. We do have a prerecorded presentation that will be playing. Good evening, members of the Planning Board. This is Daniel Villa, a senior planner in the City of Burbank Community Development Department. Tonight, I will be going over a project proposed at 3700 Riverside Drive. I'll begin by providing an overview of the project, followed by an overview of the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. I'll then transition into a summary of the draft environmental impact report that I was prepared for this project, followed by next steps. Once I conclude staff's presentation, we'll then provide an opportunity for the public to call in and provide comments on the draft environmental impact report. Before providing an overview on the project, I want to remind the Planning Board and members of the public that the Planning Board will not be making a decision to approve or deny this project during tonight's meeting. Tonight's discussion is limited to a big-picture overview of the project and the associated environmental assessment, so that the public has an opportunity to call in and comment on the draft environmental impact report. The Planning Board will consider approval or denial of the project at a later date at a notice public hearing. As of today, it is anticipated that this will occur in February or March of 2022. Having gone over this, let's now talk about the project. The project is located at 3700 Riverside Drive, property in the city's media district-specific plan that is owned Media District General Business and has a general land use designation in the general plan of Media District Commercial. The property is located on the southwest corner of the intersection at Hollywood Way and Riverside Drive. Developed on the site is an existing car wash facility, the Lakeside Car Wash. The Lakeside Car Wash was originally built in 1956 with subsequent additions and signs erected between 1957 and 1990. This is a view of the property looking from South Riverside Drive. These are other images showing the existing Lakeside Car Wash. The project proposes to construct a six-story mixed-use residential and commercial development that includes a mezzanine. There would be a total of 90 parking spaces, 49 residential condominium units, four of which would be made available to very low-income households, 2,000 square feet of commercial floor area, and publicly accessible open space. The existing Lakeside Car Wash would be demolished as part of the project. This is a rendering of the proposed mixed-use project as viewed from Riverside Drive. As can be seen towards the bottom-right corner of the image, the applicant proposes to relocate the existing pylon sign that reads "Car Wash" to the corner of Riverside Drive and Screenland Drive. On the ground floor, the applicant proposes to include a 2,000-square-foot commercial floor area portion of the building, residential amenities, landscaping, and publicly accessible open space. Vehicle access to the onsite parking, which is tucked towards the rear, would be off Hollywood Way and Screenland Drive. As part of the city's review of the project, the applicant provided staff the project objectives that shaped the proposed project. These include: to reduce vehicles' miles traveled by providing a mixed-use residential and commercial project in a jobs-rich area that is in proximity to existing and proposed transit; to help meet citywide housing demand, increase homeownership opportunities, and address regional housing needs assessment requirements through the provision of new, for-sell, quality-living options in the city; to create a transit- and pedestrian-oriented urban environment with a street-adjacent building, ground-floor commercial uses, publicly accessible open space, and widened sidewalks; to allow for the redevelopment of an underutilized property that helps address community needs through the development of housing that is economically feasible to build; to contribute to the economic health of the city through development of a project that would generate new construction, create new homeownership opportunities, house new residents to support local businesses, and provide additional long-term revenues for the city in the form of property tax and sales tax; to help meet the recreational needs of project residents and employees in the city's media district by providing landscaped common open space for residents as well as publicly accessible, privately maintained, landscaped open space on the ground floor; to provide a mix of housing types and sizes within a mixed-use project that are affordable to various economic segments of the population, including four deed-restricted affordable units, and help reduce the carbon footprint via the design of a compact urban form; to create opportunities for local-serving commercial uses within a mixed-use development project with a special focus on ground-floor uses with high-quality storefronts; to provide a development that is consistent with the city's goals for sustainable development through compliance with Green Building Code requirements as well as a city's greenhouse gas reduction plan; and to facilitate preservation of the existing freestanding pylon sign through onsite relocation as well as preserve the history of the site's operation as a car wash by inclusion of historical records and photographs within the project's common areas. The project as proposed requires approval of an entitlement package that includes a conditional use permit, development review, and a tentative condominium track map. This project is also requesting approval of a state density bonus request that amongst other things includes a request for increased density, parking deviations, and waivers from development standards. The project and these associated entitlements will require Planning Board approval at a future notice public hearing. Before getting into a summary of the environmental analysis for this project, let's broadly go over the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. CEQA was first signed into law in 1970 with the intent of establishing policy regarding environmental protection across the state of California. CEQA created a process through which local agencies can disclose information and inform decision-makers about potentially significant environmental effects of a project, identify ways to avoid or mitigate significant environmental impacts, enhance the public participation in the planning process, and foster inter-agency coordination in the review of projects. All proposed activity determined to be a project as defined in the California Environmental Quality Act is subject to the requirements of CEQA. The proposed mixed-use development is a project as defined in the California Environmental Quality Act, therefore it is subject to CEQA's environmental assessment requirements. City staff established that preparation of an initial study was required for the project. The findings of the initial study prepared in March 2021 determine that preparation of an environmental impact report was going to be necessary. The environmental review process on the slide is applicable to this project. As of today, staff has prepared a draft of the environmental impact report and has released it for a 45-day public review period that began on November 29th, 2021. The review period will end on January 12th, 2022. During this public review period, the city will be accepting comments on the draft document. Subsequent to the 45-public, 45-day public review period, staff will respond to all comments received and will also prepare a final environmental impact report. Once completed, the final environmental impact report, along with the entitlement package, will be considered by the Planning Board at a notice public hearing. As established per Appendix G of the state CEQA guidelines, the initial study and draft environmental impact report evaluated several environmental topical areas. They are included on the slide. Amongst other things, they included air quality, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, recreation, transportation, and utilities and service systems. The draft environmental impact report determined that a majority of the environmental topical areas would result in no impact, less than significant impact, or less than significant impact with mitigation incorporated. However, significant and unavoidable impacts would occur for the following environmental topical areas despite implementation of physical, feasible mitigation measures. These include aesthetics, cultural resources, and land use and planning. They are shown in red on the slide. These significant and unavoidable impacts are a result of the proposed demolition of the existing Lakeside Car Wash. The Lakeside Car Wash was one of many businesses that were constructed in response to the rapid rise in popularity of automobile transportation as Burbank and the San Fernando Valley's population increased rapidly after World War II, when returning veterans settled in the area. This significant population and automobile explosion is a unique chapter in the history of Burbank's and California's greater cultural, social, and economic history, and represents the transition from the area's early agricultural history to new commercial and residential uses. The Lakeside Car Wash is an excellent example of a post-World War II car wash in Burbank that retains a high degree of integrity. The Lakeside Car Wash is one of the few remaining examples of car washes that remain in the city from this period and is a property type associated with the city's growth, development, and emphasis on automobile culture. The Lakeside Car Wash is not currently designated a historic resource at the federal, state, or local level. However, the city's environmental assessment of the project established that the Lakeside Car Wash is eligible for designation at the federal, state, and local level, and is therefore considered a historic resource pursuant to CEQA. Therefore, demolition of the Lakeside Car Wash would result in a significant and unavoidable impact. In accordance with the CEQA guidelines, the draft environmental impact report identifies several alternatives that were considered in efforts to compare the environmental impacts of the proposed project to those of other possible projects. This first list of alternatives on the slide includes those options that were considered for analysis but rejected as they felt to meet a majority of the project objectives or they were infeasible. A description of each of these alternatives can be found in Section 7.3 of the draft environmental impact report. Additionally, two other alternatives were considered: the no-project and the partial preservation. The partial preservation looks at the option of preserving salvageable components of the existing Lakeside Car Wash and integrating them into the proposed development. Section 7.4 of the draft environmental impact report provides a more comprehensive description as well as an environmental analysis of this option, and compares the findings to those from the proposed project. The analysis establishes that the partial preservation alternative is the environmentally superior alternative, given that some of the elements of the car wash would be preserved. However, it also acknowledges that some of the applicant's project objectives would not be met, and the significant and unavoidable impact would still remain. This conclusion, this concludes staff's summary on the draft environmental impact report. As previously mentioned, a draft of the environmental impact report is out for public review. The review period will conclude on January 12th, 2022. It can, the roadmap can be seen on the screen. Should members of the public have comments, they can call in during tonight's public comment portion of the meeting, or they can submit written comments via email or mail. My contact information is on the slide. I'll leave it up here just for a couple more seconds. Next steps include the city receiving public comments on the environmental document through January 12th, 2022. After January 12th, 2022, we will be responding to all public comments, and we will be completing a final environmental impact report. Once a final environmental impact report is completed, and once staff has completed review of the project, it will be scheduled for a Planning Board public hearing so that the Planning Board can consider approval or denial of the project. Having said that, this concludes my presentation. We'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We will open the meeting to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the Planning Board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the Planning Board, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us, as it may take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through online. Madam Clerk, let us know if we have any callers.
At this time, we have no callers in the queue, but we'll allow a couple of minutes for them to come through.
Okay.
Our next caller is Sean Mann. Sean Mann, you are now live with the Planning Board.
Good evening.
Hi, good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you guys tonight?
Great.
Perfect. My, my name is Sean Mann. I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, and I live in the local area and work and recreate in the vicinity of the project. I believe that I will be impacted by the environmental impacts of this project. I feel that the city should require the project to be built utilizing a local and skilled and trained workforce. Local hiring, skilled, and trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy. There was a recent, or in the recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Road: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030," California Workforce Development Board concluded that the investments in growing, diversifying, and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. Moreover, just this year, South Coast Air Quality Management District found that the use of a local state-certified apprenticeship program or a skilled and trained workforce with local hire component can result in air pollution reductions. Other cities have not hesitated to apply skills and trained workforce requirements for private development projects in their city. Recently, the City of Hayward in Northern California adopted the skills and trained workforce requirements into its general plan and municipal code, and local skills and trained workforce requirements can boost economic development and mitigate the transportation and greenhouse gases impacts by minimizing vehicles' well, miles traveled. Thank you very much. I hope you guys enjoy your evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Our next caller is Robin Demel. Robin Demel, you are now live with the Planning Board.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. I want to take this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm Robin Demel. I'm a sustainable commissioner. However, tonight, I'm commenting as a private residence with a perspective of a sustainable commissioner. First, I'd like to say that in looking at the architecture of the building, it seems out of character for the area, and this particular development has been drafted as a mixed-use development made up of condominiums and retail space. The corner is very close to a variety of walkable shops, Whole Foods, Trader Joe, restaurants along Riverside Drive, and even within walking distance of Johnny Carson Park. So, my question to the board is, why is this mixed-use? One of the objectives is to create affordable housing, and yet 10% of the 49 condominiums will have deed-restricted affordable units. There is no mention of what affordable price will be, and in today's environment, that's especially important. From a sustainable perspective, there's a small pocket park tucked in on the street level, corner of Riverside and Screenland. Again, why a pocket park when the development is within walking distance of Johnny Carson Park? There are 90 parking spaces with 14 charging stations. If the city is truly committed to reducing greenhouse gases, then each unit should have a charging station to encourage commuters to purchase electric vehicles. As a public transit, as for public transit, residents of this complex would need to take a bus to MetroLink Stop or to Burbank Airport Hub. For water conservation recapture, roof runoff will be diverted into designated raised beds at street level. Overflow will then be diverted to street storm drains. There is no effort to do any rainwater recapture or place a cistern. Raised beds are designed with ornamental plantings to use any catapult or native pollinators. Residents of this complex would likely enjoy vegetable gardening in the raised beds instead of having non-pollinator ornamentals. Some of the identified trees could be fruit trees or, such as apple, pomegranate, or citrus. And currently, there are no plans for rooftop solar. We also want to address waste management. There's one area designated for trash on the street level.
Your three minutes has been reached.
Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Joshua Christensen. Joshua, you are now live with the Planning Board.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for taking my call. My name is Joshua Christensen. I'm a, I'm a representative with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I represent 60, a little under 60,000 carpenters in Southern California and the surrounding states, but mainly here in the, in the Burbank, Lando area. We have a substantial amount of members that live here. I'm calling on behalf of this project, 3700 Riverside Drive, mixed-use project. This project would not be good for Burbank. This project does not have requirements of local hire. Most products like this and other projects usually have labor that comes in from Riverside or from, from far away. Usually, it's labor that's unskilled, under-trained, or if any, training at all, skilled and trained language through a state-approved apprenticeship. And until that, this project has those requirements, and the, and the city sees the importance of, of a, of a skilled and trained language on this project, I don't think it should be built. It should not be passed. That is important for this area, so have these kids that come into high school who can't afford or don't choose not to go to college to be able to learn a trade, to be able to get paid for their services, to get paid an area standard wage. We feel that this project should not be approved until then. Thank you for your time, and that's all for today. Thanks.
There are no more callers in the queue.
Thank you. There being no further public comment on this item, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
Vice Chair Rizotti, I'd just like to state that the comments received are, have been received by city staff, and they will be part of the administrative record of the draft, of the comments received during the draft environmental impact report public review period. Having said that, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Board have any questions for staff? Thank you. Does the board have any questions for staff?
No questions.
Seeing none. Is there, if there are no other questions for staff, I now declare the meeting item closed. Is there a motion to note and file this report?
Motion to move, motion moving to file this report.
We have a motion?
I second it.
We have a second? Any more discussion? Please call the roll.
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Board Member Heiner?
Yes.
Board Member Otakunian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number two, now is the time and place for the public hearing on project number 21004984 concerning a request for zone text amendment to amend sections of Title 10 zoning of the Burbank Municipal Code pertaining to definitions and standards for single-family residential zones and non-conforming structures in order to regulate the construction remodel in addition to single-family residential dwellings. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest regarding this hearing?
No.
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 No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, regarding this item?
No.
No.
I'm going to say yes, considering that this was an agenda item a few weeks ago. We did have lots of discussion regarding this item, so I'm going to say yes on that. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
We did not receive any written communications on the item before you tonight.
Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Thank you, Vice Chair Rosati. I'm going to share my screen. Good evening, Vice Chair Rosati and members of the planning board. My name is Shipra Rajesh, Associate Planner in the Community Development Department. Tonight, you're being asked to consider a zone text amendment to update development standards for single-family R1 and R1H zones. The city updated its regulations on single-family residential development standards in 2017 to address concerns with the mass and bulk of new single-family dwellings, additions, and remodel of existing single-family dwellings. The 2017 Zone Text Amendment updated a number of regulations pertaining to single-family residential zones, including floor area ratio, height standards, fen standards, and created a discretionary approval process known as the Single Family Special Development Permit to implement design standards for new dwellings exceeding a certain size and large-scale additions and remodels. The updated regulations have been in effect for past four and a half years. While most of these regulations meet the intent of reducing the overall mass and bulk of single-family dwellings, revisions to certain sections of the code are needed to address several complaints and concerns regarding the current regulations and for continuation of better designs to preserve the existing character of single-family neighborhoods. Specifically, the proposed Zone Text Amendment is required to preserve the existing neighborhood character in R1 and R1H single-family residential zones by updating and extending design-related standards that would apply to all additions, remodels, and construction of single-family dwellings, remove inconsistencies from the existing regulations governing construction of single-family dwellings, and enable efficient customer service by streamlining planning review time for construction of all single-family dwellings, including remodels and additions. On October 25, 2021, the City of Burbank Planning Board considered a Zone Text Amendment proposing updates to R1 and R1H single-family residential development standards. The next few slides will provide a brief overview of the changes that were recommended for adoption by the planning board. Section 10-1-203 of Burbank Municipal Code is being updated to amend the definitions of retaining wall and whole-house demolition. Table 10-1-603A detailing the single-family residential development standards is being updated to amend the maximum allowed top-of-the-plate height of single-family residential dwellings and to expand the applicability of upper-story stepbacks and building plane modulation requirement to all second-story additions and new construction. Section 1- sorry, 10-1-603C is being amended to include regulations specifying maximum allowed top-of-the-roof height for front porches. Section 10-1-603D is being updated to list all the structures that are exempt from floor area ratio calculation as it currently applies to some structures. Additionally, updates are proposed to standards specifying inclusion of attic spaces in floor area ratio calculation. Section 10-1-603F is being amended to include list of structures that are exempt from lot coverage calculation. Section 10-1-603G is being amended to allow wider driveways on lots with garages located towards the rear of the lot. Additionally, updates are proposed to the standards regulating landscaping and pedestrian pathways within the front yard setback area of a lot. Section 10-1-603H and Section 10-1-606F are being updated to amend standards regulating construction of fences, walls, hedges, and retaining walls for the entire city. Section 10-1-603I of Burbank Municipal Code is being updated to amend the standards regulating compliance with the minimum required of street parking. Section 10-1-603M is being added to incorporate objective design guidelines for additions, remodels, and new construction of single-family dwellings. Section 10-1-606H is being updated to remove requirement of discretionary approval for pools and spas that are proposed on flat portions of a lot located in the hillside area of the city. Finally, Section 10-1-1810 is being updated to amend the standards regulating continuation of non-conforming portions of a single-family residential dwelling to allow openings along non-conforming exterior walls and allow replacement of non-conforming portions of a dwelling that have been damaged due to termites or dry rot. In addition to these updates, the planning board recommended elimination of the Single Family Development Permit discretionary review process and the associated design guidelines and neighborhood compatibility review process. The next slide provides an overview of the applicability of Single Family Development Permit process. This slide provides a summary of the current triggers for Single Family Development Permit discretionary review process. SFDP discretionary review approval contains design guidelines for neighborhood compatibility review, which was put in place to address concerns regarding mass and bulk of new single-family homes and additions and to ensure compatibility of new additions and construction with scale and character of existing neighborhood. Currently, SFDP discretionary review process is applicable for all new construction of single-family dwelling that exceeds 0.35 FAR or 3,000 square feet of gross floor area, additions to existing single-family dwelling that exceeds 500 square feet in area and is visible from the street, and remodeling work that results in whole-house demolition, which is a demolition of at least 50% of existing interior and exterior linear walls, including openings. Exemption from Single Family Development Permit process is permitted for one-story and two-story homes that are smaller than 3,000 square feet in area and have an FAR below 0.35. The Zone Text Amendment updating Single Family Development Standards was presented to the planning board at a public hearing on October 25, 2021. And based on the board's direction, following additional changes have been made for the board's consideration. SFDP discretionary review process and the associated design guidelines have been removed from Chapter 1, Title 10 of Burbank Municipal Code. Elimination of SFDP discretionary review process will allow for ministerial approval of all single-family projects, including additions, remodels, and new construction that are not located in the hillside area of the city. Elimination of SFDP discretionary review process will remove the associated design standards from the Burbank Municipal Code, leading to absence of design standards for single-family residential developments. With this Zone Text Amendment, staff is recommending inclusion of a few objective design standards to incorporate plain breaks and articulation along dwelling street frontages and to regulate the mass and bulk of single-family residential developments. The next slide provides an overview of the proposed objective design standards. Objective design standards mean standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and are uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable by both the development applicant and the public official prior to submittal. Currently, the code has some objective standards that regulate development of single-family dwellings, including floor area ratio and lot coverage. The goal of the proposed standards is to clarify city's intention for construction of single-family residential units, and these additional standards will complement the existing standards by regulating the mass and bulk of single-family dwellings. This slide gives an overview of the objective design standards that are being proposed as a part of the Zone Text Amendment. Number one, front entry design. All new residential construction and/or expansion or remodeling work that alters the entrance of a dwelling shall comply with the following design elements. Entry porches, when provided, shall be at least five feet wide and four feet deep, and front entries and doors shall be located along the street-facing facade of a main dwelling. Number two, facade details. For all new residential construction or remodeling or addition to a single-family dwelling that includes alteration of exterior facades, at least 20% of the area of each street-facing facade shall be windows or entrance doors. Number three, privacy. A two-story project design shall provide landscape screening in the form of trees, shrubs, and/or hedges that meet the city height requirements along the shared property lines for the full length of a single-family dwelling being developed. Number four, mass and bulk. Upper-story square footage of a dwelling shall be limited to 85% of the first-story gross square footage. Number five, exterior lighting. When exterior lighting is incorporated, it shall be designed to avoid glare and light spill over onto adjoining and adjacent residences and public right-of-way. Finally, number six, prohibited materials. Following materials will be prohibited. Barred windows, use of unfinished cinder block or concrete blocks for building facade or fences, roofing materials with a reflective surface that produces glare, and siding with a reflective surface that produces glare. In conclusion, staff would like to reiterate that the proposed Zone Text Amendment will preserve the existing neighborhood character in R1 and R1H single-family residential zones by updating and extending design-related standards that would apply to all additions, remodels, and construction of single-family dwellings, remove inconsistencies from the existing regulations governing construction of single-family dwellings, and enable efficient customer service by streamlining planning review time for construction of all single-family dwellings, including remodels and addition. Public outreach for the public hearing on the Zone Text Amendment was done in accordance with Burbank Municipal Code, Section 10-1-1964, which included notice in the newspaper 10 days prior to the hearing. Additionally, email was sent to regular applicants providing information regarding the proposed updates. Moreover, staff has sent emails to all these single-family development permit applicants from the last two years notifying them of the proposed updates. The next steps include city council consideration of the board's recommendation on Zone Text Amendment and the proposed draft ordinance at a noticed public hearing. Staff recommends that planning board adopt the following resolution. A resolution of the planning board of the City of Burbank recommending the city council adopt an ordinance of the city council of the City of Burbank amending Title 10, Chapter 1, zoning of the Burbank Municipal Code to update standards and definitions pertaining to single-family residential zones and continuation of non-conforming structures. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us as we take a couple of minutes for the first callers to get through the line. Vice Chair, if we can give it another minute, just to ensure. We don't have any callers at this point, but we'll just give it another minute.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you. Having no callers, I will now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
No comments.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for staff?
If I may, Vice Chair Rosati, I have a few questions.
Sir, go ahead.
Thanks for the presentation. I appreciate the fact that there are some elements or provisions that the staff made in reference to the front entry, the facade details, privacy, bulk, the exterior lighting, and the prohibited material. I've got a couple of questions about the general concept here. I can appreciate that you're calling this an objective standard, whereas it can be measured, it can be, you know. I somewhat disagree with that because not everything that was listed in there is objective. They can be objectively measured, that is correct, but some of them cannot be, such as the the privacy. I mean, how can it be objectively measured? Basically, you're calling for, the recommendation is to have vegetation of some sort, the entire length of the property, not the property, I apologize, the dwelling, for a second-story addition. the entire length of the property, not the property, I apologize, the dwelling, uh, for a second-story addition. Now, what if that's not possible to do? What would happen? Then, does that mean that that individual is prohibited from being able to build a second story uh on their on their dwelling? The general concept here is, I don't think the language used in these additional objective uh recommendations should be so rigid, in the sense that there is no way we can anticipate every single item. So the question is, uh, why is it that we can, why is it that we should not put any language in here that will leave some leeway for those situations where some of these things cannot be accommodated? Because the language used in here is shall, uh, which some could interpret to be, well, it's absolute. The one, let's take a front entry, a four foot, a five foot wide, four foot deep. Uh, for some reason, that cannot be accommodated for this particular project. Does that mean that the individual is now unable to do the project?
Um, thank you, board member. Uh, regarding your first question about privacy, um, the measurable component here is the screening. So say it, so the first response would be no. If someone um is proposing a second story, um, the requirement that's stated here says that, um, if you're doing a second story, you need to provide screening along the shared property lines to enhance privacy, and it's objective because the type of screening that they would provide is measurable. The height of it can be measured, we can limit it to six feet, but the city standard in the interior um property line and could go up to eight feet. And the length is um the length of the development or the addition that they're doing along this rare of the house. So it's measurable because the component, the screening that we are asking for, we can actually measure it. We can, you can specify the height and the length of it. Secondly, regarding the entry porches, um, this only is applicable when someone um wants to have an entry porch. And the reason for having a minimum width and length is to make sure that there is some building articulation along the front facade of the house that um that is substantial. Um, however, this does not impact a house that is not um proposing a front porch for for their front facade. Only thing that they'll have to comply with would be the front entrance that should be located along a street-facing facade of a main dwelling.
If Chair, Vice Chair, if I may add to, just uh as far as the land, the screening, um, Shipra, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think under the neighborhood compatibility checklist, there was reference to screening, but it wasn't defined. So the the what's presented before you, uh, I think the board member, Atikanyan noted, was giving specificity on height and length and giving some ability to make it in the form of whether it's fencing, trees, shrubbery, or whatnot. But but it would address prior concerns regarding the second floor um construction to neighboring properties as far as screening, uh, without leaving it so vague that it was left up to, uh, you know, subjective standards uh when you considered, well, what height and at what length uh would be considered sufficient?
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. My my concern is is not really the application of this because they seem to be pretty, I mean, in in some instances, it's not very onerous, it's very simple things, uh, such as, you know, I've seen some roofing that's very reflective, uh, this this clay shiny-type roofing that's very reflective. And and I appreciate the fact that that's being taken into consideration at times, you know, when the sun hits and so forth, when you're driving. But but some of the, my concern is basically the the language used, whereas I think there should be, we're trying to make it somewhat easier to comply and somewhat easier to design, somewhat easier to to be able to uh move the project forward versus having the project being bogged down. Is there any type, the the, I guess my recommendation would be, more than a question, would be to have some, that these things are not so rigid that they are in the sense that if, let's say the shrubbery. If if we, if someone does go ahead and 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 that's gonna take a lot of money to go ahead and 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 fence, let's say, a length of a structure, which probably would be about fifty feet, forty feet, forty to sixty feet, somewhere in that neighborhood, uh, thirty-five feet to sixty feet. And if that shrubbery is not really helping to give the neighboring property additional privacy, then obviously, it's unnecessary, it it's not going to add anything, unless they want to enjoy it, that's fine. What I'm trying to say is, there should be some flexibility here where these objective things are not absolutely mandatory in order to be able to push the project forward. That's my only concern. Otherwise, these are, you know, very reasonable guidelines to have in instances where they can be applied. Or perhaps some, perhaps in the privacy instance, if they can uh obtain a letter from their neighbor saying, hey, uh, it's okay, I don't mind my neighbor not having the the uh shrubs there. Would that be something that they can do without the the shrubs? Is that a possibility? I don't know, under this scheme. Is that possible? Is it possible not to have shrubs or not to have those trees planted? If the, if if one neighbor goes to the other and says, here's one of my requirements, or I'm supposed to comply, is it okay for me not to do this? And the neighbor says, yeah, that's fine, don't worry about it, we don't need it, here's my signature.
The the one issue we have with that, board member Atikanyan, and we've actually had this happen, is we could have somebody, I'll just give you a, since you're doing a what-if scenario. There's a concern with not having an objective standard that is applied across the board to everybody when we create those potential alternate scenarios where we, uh, you know, say, well, let's go to the neighbor and see if I can get a letter. We've had instances where we have elderly people that are living next door, uh, in the process of actually reviewing the project. That elderly person, let's say, isn't, may not be of sound mind or passes away, and then the the child, the child now owns a property, looks at it and says, well, is it a requirement? Well, no, actually, they they went to, you know, your your former property owner and got a waiver. And they're like, well, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have agreed to that. We've we've had instances where there is disagreement as to how it was undertaken, how that approval was gotten. So what's in front of you are standards that we've either derived from existing uh checklist items or even actually language in the code, like in the case of the eighty-five percent uh second story versus first-story limitation, there's actually language already in our code, but we're bringing it forth and being more explicit with the requirements. So you're right, they're all shall because they're requirements with with that specificity. If you were going to want to kind of provide a relief valve, then that would be a discussion about maybe having something where, uh, you know, uh, they could request some sort of modification from the city planner based on some sort of physical limitation. But we have that, that's a variance application for that particular issue, so.
Well, in that instance, basically, what we're doing is now we're delaying the project to, uh, because because of the requirement, now there's a another process to go through for the uh approval of the project, which is the variance. Uh, I guess, I guess they could file it uh along with, you know, with their initial paperwork to have the variance or something to that effect.
And to your point, the variance would be driven by the physical limitations of the property, which I think was your your point initially.
Right, so, uh, I don't know, I I mean, we we wanted, my my whole, my idea of this was to try and simplify things to make it easier, to, less complicated, to get the projects, uh, you know, reviewed, uh, make it faster for reviewer because of the the all the other different nuances and subjectivity. We've we've done a lot of that. I'm just concerned that by, I I'm not too concerned about the eighty-five percent because I think the second-story setbacks will lend themselves for someone not being able to develop more than eighty-five percent anyway. So I'm not too worried about that, the exterior lighting sounds pretty, uh, reasonable, the the prohibited materials, fine, the the, I I'm concerned about the 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 privacy aspect uh of 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 these uh objective items, if they can be accommodated or not. But having said that, I think I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just ask a couple of questions. Um, I just had some recent experience with this. Are we calling out what the screening material is, or is the applicant proposing?
Uh, within the code, we have provided options. It could be in the form of trees, shrubbery, or hedges that meet um city height requirements. They could also propose a fence.
So if I said, um, I would like to uh put Japanese blueberry in for trees, would that be a problem?
It depends on the lot, and um as long as the height is maintained for for the trees that they're proposing, and they're able to maintain it for, you know, for a certain duration.
Is the is the city calling out the the gallons or?
No.
No.
No, we're not.
So if you're not calling out the gallons, so I just planted a Japanese blueberry, which creates a nice hedge. You can get twenty gallons, fifteen gallons, ten gallons. Twenty gallons is about a hundred dollars a gallon, which in this case, fifty feet would be, what, five thousand dollars? You can get a fifteen gallon, which is eighty dollars, or you can get ten gallon, which ranges anywhere between twenty-five and thirty-five dollars. So if we're not calling out the gallons, and they wanted to go with the Japanese blueberry, which creates a nice hedge and privacy and can grow as high as you really want them, then if you opted with the ten gallon, it'd be pretty reasonable.
That that flexibility is is available. We we do have a landscape architect on the city um roster that actually reviews all single families. So they can uh make suggestions, but ultimately, it would be up to the property owner to determine species. And as a result of that, it may take more time to grow in that privacy screen or less, depending on the size, uh, but it would be, the flexibility would be given to the property owner.
So, Mr. Atikanyan, I I go I go back to you and say, knowing that we have that flexibility, if he wants to be aggressive and buy the twenty gallons, he can. Or if he wants to just go with the the smaller ten gallons for twenty-five, um, there is a little bit of flexibility. Uh, does that give you some kind of peace?
Uh, my my other concern was, what if some, let's say, on on some properties where you don't have a straight lot line? Well, let's say you have a a trapezoid, you know, the lots narrowing coming uh to the back. Now, if if you start planting trees, that may create a problem with the side yard where even if you meet the setback requirement, you plant a tree, you you really don't have good physical space to to operate and go through back and forth. And plus, I also wanted to ask, is this because if there is a window, or it doesn't matter if there's a window of that portion of the structure, uh, that would be required for some sort of a shrub?
Board member, currently, uh, the window doesn't matter whether or not a window is present. If they're going upper story, if they're adding to the upper story, um, they would be required to provide screening, and they can opt for a fence instead of shrubbery or trees if that works better for them. And the reason for this is because in the past, we've had the single-family permits that we've processed, there've been majority of the projects that that were, um, you know, where the neighbors were concerned about the privacy, and that's why we decided to retain this.
But if there's no window, what's the concern for the privacy? I don't quite understand.
Um, the reason for not specifying a window is because most mo- most of the times there are windows, but even if there are not, um, sometimes there's open deck, they can always create a window at a later date. Um, so just to be more conservative, we um, we went forward with having a specific standard for privacy.
And if I, if I may add, Vice Chair, um, you know, speculated on whether there's a window or not, whether there's a deck or not. The fact is, in essence, what the board has done is given greater discretion of the develop, uh, to an applicant, a resident, a property owner, to build out a second story. So in giving them the ability to have less restrictions when it comes to building a second story, and in essence, mitigating what was, has been identified as a concern over the last four years, is to uh require the vegetative screening as basically an overture to the neighbor to say, okay, you're not gonna be able to, in essence, challenge the second story. And as a result of that, they're gonna be able to, they're gonna be required by the city to put some screening in to six to eight feet. That's really what it is.
It's a meeting between the two, I I understand.
Well, what about those lots that are at the corner? And 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 the side of the house faces the street?
Uh, so the requirement here specifies that it only is required along the shared property lines. So in case of a corner lot, uh, the street-facing side, you don't have to provide that.
I I'm still, I'm still having issues when when there's no window. If I I can appreciate and say, okay, well, you know, they can put windows uh later, obviously, that needs to be permitted. And if the neighbor sees that the neighbor's putting in a window, could ask the question, you know, I mean, I I don't know, I'm just a bit uneasy with 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 this being a shall. You have to do it, you have to do it along the entire length of the structure. And I can appreciate the flexibility in terms of, well, you know, you don't have to buy the expensive uh type of vegetation, you can do it by fencing. Uh, it 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 creates this, when when you have a an eight-foot wall, uh, and uh, I I don't know. Um, does it matter how close the structure is to the shared property line?
Um, for the upper story, they have to comply with certain step-back requirements and modulation requirement. So it depends on the width of the lot, the distance that they'll have to provide from the side property line.
Let's say, let's say the lot is is uh fifty feet wide, and the second story is uh is twenty feet from the edge of the one of the shared lots. Would they still have to do an eight-foot uh uh or or six-foot vegetation along that shared lot line?
Currently, the way it reads, yes, they will have to.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, those variations, it's it's definitive that if you're doing a second story, you you do either six or eight, and you pick whether you want fence or or shrubbery or tree.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. How will the planning board like to deliberate? I'll lead off, well, go ahead, Mr. Atikanyan.
Well, I I'm fine with 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 what's, what we have here, with the exception of the privacy. Obviously, I've I've uh, I think that needs to be refined more, made more objective, uh, and 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 made more sense in the in the sense that I know it's it's the, this this is simple, very simple. You have a second story, put in, put in the length of the lot, two uh hedges or fences along the lot. Uh, and uh, I I'm not, I I don't, I think it takes away from, it's not nice to have eight-foot fences with make, I mean, sure, uh, you want some type of a barrier or something delineating the lot, but eight-foot fence is not, doesn't look very nice, or an eight-foot hedge right there doesn't look very nice. I I would suggest to add, perhaps, uh, if if the structure, the second-story structure is closer than, closer than fifteen feet to the to the adjacent lot line, then fine. If, but anything further than fifteen feet, that's where the second story is, I don't think this should be a requirement. Uh, that's where I'm at with this one.
Any other input? Uh, I'm gonna say that, uh, this is, we've come a long way from four and a half, five years ago. Uh, I am, I was really pleased at looking at at the the packet uh when we received it. I I can tell you that I can identify the amount of hard work, Shipra, that has gone into this. So I just wanted to thank you for preparing these documents for us to review. How do we want to proceed? Atikanyan, you got a, you got something you would like to propose?
I mean, I I like to hear, I like to hear from my colleagues to see what they think about my proposal. I mean, if this make, does not make sense to anyone, I mean, if this does not make sense to anyone, then my concern is to creating these two walls, right? I mean, especially if you have a, let's say you have a five-foot setback, which I think traditionally what we have, and then you plant this shrub. The shrub, we know they're going to take up two and a half, two feet, two and a half feet at least of width from that five feet, because obviously, trees grow, or shrubs grow. So I can see how this could be a problem. I mean, and I don't think it's going to be serving its purpose. If the purpose is to create privacy, and I'm for that, I'm not suggesting that there shouldn't be some consideration to create some privacy. That's not what I'm suggesting. What I'm suggesting is that the privacy that we accomplish, what we are seeking to accomplish, without making it, let's say, a flat requirement, that if it's applicable, it works there, of course, yes, let's apply it. But I can see many instances where you, this would be a problem to limit second-story construction. So that's my concern.
I just have a quick question, and if I understand it correctly, because I would have the same problem. If somebody's going to build a monolithic wall next to my property, and you have an eight-foot wall, you're right, it's not very attractive. But I guess, I don't know how you can codify that. So when you're saying it's a, I guess I'm not clear as to what, where you're going with that. If there's, somebody has to build an eight-foot wall for privacy, then it has, I mean, again, I'm really not clear as to what your point is about the privacy aspect of it. I mean, as you say, if you're building, if you're putting in a three-foot tree, how long is that going to take to get to a point where it's, you know, a privacy issue? Again, I'm not quite sure where you're going with this.
I have no problem with the privacy provision. I think it's fair, it's reasonable. If it was, if it was me in that position, I would want the city to help me make sure that's enforced. I think it's good for, good for the people of Burbank that it would be in there.
I think, I think having the 15-foot from the second story that you were saying, for the screening, I think that's a good number. If you're setback that far, if you're any closer, then you should be required to put the screening in.
I mean, if we want, we can make that 20 feet, if that's more reasonable. But I think 15 feet's a good number to basically protect the privacy of the neighbor. Because I, if I was in anyone's position to say, well, you know what, someone is going to build a second story, and they're going to be, yes, looking into my backyard, no one likes that. No one wants that. I want to protect both parties. I want to come up with something reasonable that works for everyone. I'm not saying this does not work. It works every single time. But I think it puts the burden entirely on the person who is trying to add the second story. So if there is some sort of, we create a buffer, which is, let's say, if the structure is not within 15 feet of the property line, I think the neighbor could even, I mean, plant trees and have them grow if they're that much concerned about having privacy. So to put the entire burden on the one who is building the second story, I think it would be, and at times, if they're not able to accomplish it, that means they don't get to build their second story. So I'm taking their right away. So I'm trying to balance privacy versus the right to be able to build your second story. If you're within the five feet, and you have windows, and you're going to be peering down on the person's backyard, sure, let's go ahead and do this. Let's apply this. Yes, Mr. Rizori?
I think, I think 20 feet would be completely a healthy distance away, not to have the requirement, 100%.
I'm fine with that. If we can, if we can say, if we can say, everything that it says in the presentation, or the section, or whatever's included, provided the structure is not more than 20 feet away from the adjacent lot.
And Vice Chair, can I clarify? Board Member Altikian, what you're referring to is the second floor, the second story not being closer than 20 feet from the property line, right?
Correct. Because at times, the second story is offset. It's offset to one side of the property or the other side of the property. So why have two eight-feet walls going through the, I mean, next to the property?
Just for clarification, we are modulating everything.
We are modulating.
Everything.
Yeah. And if I can say, Board Member Heiner, the 20-foot offset for the second floor would provide enough spacing that it would significantly mitigate the potential impact to the neighbor. So it might be a good middle ground, so to speak. I'd just throw that out there for your consideration as a group.
And so it's only the sides that we're talking, really? Because that's really where the shorter distance usually is. Because most people are going to have 20-feet backyards. So we're saying they don't have to do the backyard fence?
We're only talking about the sides.
The sides are the ones that have become issues because of the, because of the upper-floor windows and balconies and whatnot.
A side that is, where the second story is not more than 20 feet, I don't think it's going to happen. So I think I'll still get the privacy fences. So it's probably reasonable.
You're right, most of them will. But to Board Member Altikian's point, in those instances where we have even larger lots with bigger setbacks, the 20-foot would more than cover. So if your, if your upper floor is more than 20 feet away from the property line, to Board Member Altikian's, it provides some relief without adversely impacting the neighbor, which is, I think, your point as well.
I think that would be reasonable.
You want to make that motion?
Yes. Like to make a motion to adopt resolution Exhibit A of the Planning Board, City of Burbank, recommending the City Council adopt an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Burbank, amending Title 10, Chapter 1 zoning of the Burbank Municipal Code to update standards and definitions pertaining to single-family residential zones and continuation of non-conforming structures, Project Number 21-0004984, with the following amendment to Section...
You can just say screening, the screening portion of it. Item three, item three of the screening.
That's on page three, is that correct? Yes.
It's in Exhibit A44.
Hold on.
10 dot 1 dot 6 oh 3.
Item three on page seven of the report that we received, amended to show that a two-story project design shall provide landscape screening in the form of trees, shrubs, and/or hedges that meet the city height requirements along the shared property lines to the full length of the single-family dwelling being developed, provided that the structure is not closer than 20 feet to the adjacent lot.
The, correct that, if I may, to the second story, right? Second story portion.
Yes, the second story, correct.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
I second it.
We have a second. Any more discussion? I'm just going to, again, acknowledge our staff for coming back with this and doing a really good job with meeting of the minds. Please call the roll.
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Board Member Heiner?
Yes.
Board Member Altikian?
Yes, as amended.
Vice Chair Rizori?
Yes, as amended.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Oral communications. Now is the time for oral communications from the public. Any person speaking during this period of, may address the planning board. On any matter concerning city business, comments are limited to three minutes. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open. Please bear with us, as we may take a minute or two to get the first two callers in. No callers at the moment, or let's give it another minute.
Our next caller is Gail Hash. Gail Hash?
Hello?
Our next caller is Gail Hash. Gail Hash, you are now live at the planning board.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm calling in about the text amendment that was just discussed with the planning board.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm calling regarding the sort of standard lots in Magnolia Park area that are, say, 6,700 square feet or so, and have less than, I'm going to say, less than 10 feet between a fence. And wondering, how is it possible to have that requirement fulfilled with a hedge or trees when we're sharing, let's say, our driveways above each other without a fence in between? Or when the houses are within five feet or less to the fence line? Has the board considered these types of situations?
Thank you for your comment, and I'll have staff respond to that after your call.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have another call?
Yes, we have a call coming through the queue. Our next caller is Lauren. Lauren, you are now live at the planning board.
Good evening. Good evening. A couple things. First of all, I did a remodel probably about three years ago, and recently submitted an application for a new one. I just want to say, the new process that's been transitioned to online has been fantastic. So thank you for implementing those changes. It's amazing. Hopefully, we go further in that direction doing stuff online. It's just so great. My second thing is, one thing that would be wonderful for homeowners, if there could be kind of more detailed clarification with what is the delineation between single-family special development permits, as well as remodels or additions that don't have to go through the intense scrutiny. I know there are rules, but as someone who has recently applied, they're a bit kind of difficult to understand. So that's just something I was hoping. And I know that was a goal of this meeting, was to kind of lay those out more. So just as much clarification makes it a lot easier for us. So there's fewer rounds of drafts with our architects and drafts people. But otherwise, thank you for taking the time to at least take some of these thoughts into consideration that you've been discussing. It's great, and I think wonderful for the City of Burbank. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Those two components will be gone, and we'll have our city staff comment on that. Any more callers?
There are no more callers in the queue.
No more callers, I'm going to close. Public comment, if we can have a couple of comments from staff regarding the setbacks, regarding almost zero lot line between the two.
Just for the record, the item was closed, but based on the request of the Vice Chair, we're just going to respond in general to the comments that were received after the agendized item.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rizori. To answer the first question, in Magnolia Park, the houses, maybe the caller who called was referring to existing non-conforming setbacks that are often shorter than the current setbacks that we require. The standards that are being proposed would require all the upper-story additions to comply with the current setback that is in place within the code. Having said that, if the spacing between the two homes does not allow for a hedge or a fence or a tree, they don't have to do that. They can always put up a vinyl fence, you know, six feet high, eight feet high, depending upon the location of the fence, as long as it meets the city height requirement standards. Even though the existing non-conforming setbacks between the two houses might be really short, vinyl fence or anything to that effect, the code does provide flexibility for them to have that instead of a tree or a hedge. To answer the second question that was raised, single-family special development permit currently applies to those projects that are exceeding in FAR of .35, if it's a new house, and have more than 3,000 square feet gross floor area. If it's an addition, if the applicant is proposing more than 500 square feet addition that is visible from the street, doesn't matter if it's first story or second story, then they have to go through this process. And if they're doing remodeling work, where they're doing more than 50% demolition of existing interior and exterior walls along with the openings, then they have to go through this process. Those homes that are under 3,000 square feet and under .35 FAR do not have to go through a single-family special development permit. And remodeling work that don't add more than 500 square feet, or add more than 500 square feet that's not visible from the street, don't have to go through single-family. And then if they're not demolishing more than 50% of existing interior and exterior linear walls, then they don't have to go through it. All of this is available online, Section 10-1-607 of Burbank Municipal Code.
And Shipra, correct me if I'm wrong, but what the board recommended to the council tonight would eliminate single-family altogether, would eliminate neighborhood checklists, would establish a set of objective standards. So the reality of it is that any submittal now, and the one caller that called in, would no longer have to go through single-family. They would just have to comply with the .4 requirement, and the required setbacks, and all the objective standards for the upper-floor modulation. So I think we could say definitively, it's going to be a shorter timeframe. And it'll be greater clarity to an applicant to know what's expected of them upfront. So I think once, if the council were to approve the changes being recommended by the board, Shipra outlined the process that it currently stands, which, case in point, can be quite onerous. What's being recommended by the board, taking into full account that the ultimate goal of dealing with bulk and mass and compatibility is addressed to the objective standards that remain as a result of their effort. I think we're in a good position.
Agreed. Now is the time for reports from city staff. Any reports?
No reports, Vice Chair.
Now is the time for approval of minutes from the November 8, 2021 meeting. Planning board members, any comments or motion? Mr. Monaco, motion? I think that was a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second?
Board Member Monaco?
Yes.
Board Member Heiner?
I abstain.
Board Member Altikian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizori?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now is the time for introduction of new agenda items. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place it on a future agenda item. Do any members have anything they want to introduce? Seeing none, now is the time for city planner comments.
Just wanted to take the opportunity, since this is the last meeting of the board before the end of the year, just to thank you all for all your commitment of time, and, you know, your feedback. You bring different aspects to these projects, and we're very appreciative of the input and perspective that you've provided. I think the projects collectively, including tonight's consideration of a code amendment, are better for it. So I wanted to just take the time to thank you for your effort, as you've acknowledged the effort of the planning staff as well. And also just to wish you a happy holidays. And hopefully, we'll be able to meet again at the beginning of the new year and continue the work of the city, helping to build a safe, beautiful, and thriving community. So thank you for your time and your effort and your professionalism. We're the better for all your input. We're, we're the better for all your input. Thank you.
We now adjourn to the next online planning board meeting on Monday, January tenth at six PM twenty twenty-two. The public is invited to view the meeting online or on television and will be able to provide public comment in the following ways, by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, www.burbankca.gov/ecomments, or by calling directly to the planning board meeting at eight one eight two three eight three 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 five. Thank you all for your participation. Wishing everyone a happy new year, a merry Christmas and happy holidays, happy Hanukkah. Thank you all.
Thank you.